Good evening, and welcome to the July 29th meeting of the Concord Select Board. I'll remind everybody that our meeting this evening is being broadcast and recorded. Our first order of business tonight is a consent agenda on which our town accountants warrants. We don't have any minutes to approve tonight. We have two gifts, both from the Carlisle Community Chest, one for $11,107 for community service coordinator gift account, and the other for $5,750 for the school resource officer gift account. Thank you very much. We have a resolution which will be ready for us to sign that to do with future act, an act of utility transition to usable renewable energy in support of Massachusetts Legislative House Bill 2849 and Senate Bill 1940. Monday special licenses, Salt Box Farm on August 20th from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., 40 Westford Road, Wine and Malt. Salt Box Farm on the 23rd of August from 6:00 to 8:30, 40 Westford Road, Wine and Malt. True West Brewing on August 13th and 16th through the 17th from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. at 275 Forest Ridge Road, Wine and Malt. And Verro Farm on August 20th from 12:00 to 3:00 p.m. at 11 Wheeler Road, Wine and Malt. Again on the 22nd from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at 11 Wheeler Road, Wine and Malt. And again on September 22nd from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at 11 Wheeler Road. Special entertainment license for the Concord players on November 11th, 17th, February 16th, May 3rd, and June 7th at 51 Walden Street in the theater.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Kate Hodges. I'm the deputy town manager. I was on vacation last week in beautiful Maine, so the town manager's report is rather light, but today marks the start of the second ambulance running 24/7 in West Concord, which is excellent, and four new firefighters will be starting this week as well that coincide with that. So that's really exciting news. Heard from the deputy chief today, and he's already received a lot of positive feedback from residents. The fiscal year '21 guide letter was finalized by the Finance Committee last week and is going to be sent out today. Included amongst many of the other things that they ask for on an annual basis is a sustainable guideline increase, which is new, and FinCom has decided or determined 1.8% is the town's sustainable guideline increase. So that's quite a bit lower than we've been seeing in other years, but they have a mathematical formula, et cetera, for how they came about that. So I'll be interested in reading that in the letter. We are receiving assistance from Acton Natural Resources. Lori Capone has left as the assistant director to take the director's job in Sudbury, and Delia Kay, who is our natural resources directors, on vacation. So we are receiving some assistance from Acton's natural resource director, Tom Tidman. It is going to be on a very part-time basis, but we're appreciative to the town of Acton for helping us out there. The health director, Susan Rask, and building commissioner, Ray Matty, have taken two sets of sound readings at the new Umbrella Center for the Arts in response to neighbors' noise complaints. The rooftop air handling equipment was found to have been operating improperly and has now been adjusted to operate at the lower sound levels. The local inspector, Ed Mullin, completed his final inspection of the Umbrella's addition and renovation project. So Department of Planning and Land Management will follow up with other town departments to determine and confirm that all conditions of the special permit have been met prior to the issuance of their final certificate of occupancy. In the letter, there was a letter that was sent out by the Health Department to food service establishments advising all licensed food service establishments and retail food stores that the Mass Department of Public Health issued a policy that CBD oil cannot be added into foods. And so we want to make sure that folks in the area know that. And lastly, I think that it's been long awaited that we have our tourism and visitor services manager, the woman who we've chosen, her name is Beth Williams. And Beth comes to us as a marketing consultant, multiple organizations, including Salem Food Tours, and was also the chair and co-chair and a member of the board of Destination Salem. She has an associate director, she was the associate director of marketing at the Peabody Essex Museum. She was the president of Destination Salem, and her experience ranges from working with large program campaigns to small campaigns stretching every dollar for vendors. She has a great positive attitude. She'll be a great representative for the town of Concord, and she sees the potential with the visitor center and tourism. We had the opportunity to meet her and interview her, myself, Recreation Director Ryan Kane, Public Information Director Erin Stevens, and Concord Business Partnership President Kate Carr. And we all unanimously just found her positivity and spunk really infectious. So we hope to establish a start date with her later on in this week, and then we hope to bring her in so you all can meet her and let her know your expectations.
Just in time for the economic vitality.
There you go.
Yes. Just in time.
Are there any questions for?
I have a question about the ambulance. That's really great news. I know we've been trying to do it for several years. And it is quite expensive to hire those four firefighters and run the second ambulance. I'm wondering if we could get any information about, are there fees ever charged to insurance companies, say if somebody had an accident on Route 2 and they don't, they're not a Concord resident or whatever, like some kind of a report?
Okay. I can ask the deputy chief, Walter Latta.
Okay, thank you.
For that information.
Are there other questions? Okay, next item is my remarks, which are very brief, but I want to make a comment on remarks that Kate made with respect to the Finance Committee. They are working on establishing a sustainability index of some kind, and they include it in this letter, but to both the schools and the town, as you indicated, but it shouldn't be construed as a guideline in any stretch of the imagination. It's a way, I think they would say it's an additional tool that they would like to use as they review town and school budgets. And I don't remember the exact calculation for the index, but it was a regional consumer price index and a couple of others. So I apologize for remembering that, but I don't want it mistaken for a guideline. All right, and I have only really one remark to make, and that is the Select Board will not be meeting on August 12th, which would be two weeks from today. We'll meet next on August 26th. And between now and then, we will welcome our new town manager, who will begin service with the town on August the 12th. As a consequence of that, this is Ms. Hodges' last meeting as interim. She introduced herself as a deputy town manager, but she's actually the interim.
Job I like.
Yeah, I know. But I wanted to, on behalf of the board, thank you for the service that you provided to town over these many weeks here doing your job in addition to town manager's job. I know us a lot, and it's greatly appreciated, and you did a fine job for us, so thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is a 705 public hearing, petition for the installation of coaxial cable from Utility Pool 142 Main Street to Utility Pool Number 4 Church Street. That's quite a long ways. Comcast of Massachusetts, Inc. Can I have a motion to open the public here?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Greg Franks. I'm here on behalf of Comcast in support of our petition to serve a new customer at 27 Junction Square Drive. The plan that's before you involves attaching at Utility Pool Number 4 on Church Street, which is right around the corner, and going to Pool Number 142 on Main Street. And I know that a site visit has occurred, and we're familiar with the DPW's conditions and fully prepared to comply with them.
Okay, is that an unusual distance?
My understanding is the distance really depends on where a piece of equipment is located on the line outside that sort of allows you to plug in. So there's one, you know, every number of feet on the line, so it depends on sort of where you're located in relation to that piece of equipment.
All right. Well, the application is in order. Is there any questions from the board?
Are there typically other departments besides DPW that weigh in, like police or the light plant? Do they weigh in with comments?
No.
No, the only time the police department would weigh in is if it required any type of detail, and my understanding is this does not.
What about the light plant?
No, the utility poles that they're going to be using belong to Verizon.
Okay.
So if there was some interruption in the street or stuff like that?
Correct.
So the DPW had some conditions? I don't think that they're in our packet, but, or maybe I missed it, but you're willing to comply with all the conditions?
Of course, yeah. They're usually, they're pretty standard.
Right.
I know that our project manager has seen them, and he's indicated there's no problem with them.
All right. Any other questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing no hands, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Any further discussion? Linda?
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Don't go yet.
Nope.
You're almost done.
Move to approve the application from the Comcast of Massachusetts, Inc. to install overhead coaxial cable from Utility Pool Number 1402 Main Street to Utility Pool Number 4 Church Street. In accordance with the plan, aerial cable placement request received July 1, 2019, filed with the Select Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Now you're done. Thank you very much for coming. All right, our next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the change of officers associated with Section 12 Club All Alcohol License for the Muscatacut Sportsman Club at 250 Old Mill Road. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is John McGary. I'm president of Muscatacut Sportsman's Club, and I'm seeking town approval of our new board and offices.
And this is for new folks on the board, this is a fairly regular event.
Yes, annually.
I think we see you annually with this, pretty straightforward. Any questions? Any questions from the public? All right, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion by the board? All right, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the application from the Muscatacut Sportsman Club, Inc., located at 250 Old Mill Road for change of directors and manager associated with the existing Section 12 Club All Alcohol License.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We'll see you next year.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming. Next item on the agenda is really not an item for discussion, but it's titled Library Partnership Process. As you may or may not know, the town and the library have a longstanding partnership arrangement. In a fiscal way, the way it plays out is that the town is responsible for all of the operating expenses, including paying the salaries of employees, and the Library Corporation is essentially responsible for all infrastructure and construction, and that's a generalization. It's been a long time since the contract has been, partnership has been updated, and earlier in the spring, we, the board, I think, had begun the process of getting that done with the former chair. In the transition, we kind of let it lapse, if you will. I let it lapse. I've subsequently met with the chair of the Library Corporation, and we've agreed to get this back on track. I just wanted to make that announcement tonight and indicate that on the 26th of August, which is our next regularly scheduled Select Board meeting, we will actually discuss this. And somebody from Library Corporation will be here, and we'll try to articulate the issues and things like that. And then I think what I will propose is that we will simply have somebody from the Select Board and the town and the Library Corporation and the library management get together and do this job, and then come report back to the Select Board and the town. There's a few issues because the contract is old and hasn't been dealt with for a while, but I'm sure that we'll be able to get those resolved and move forward with this longstanding partnership. So I just wanted to make that announcement tonight so people would know the 26th of August, we'll be picking this up as a more formal agenda item. All right, the next item is conflict of interest disclosure by municipal employee. And this has to do with court booth, right, Kate?
Yes, correct.
Are you, do you want to report out, or?
I don't have it in front of me.
The court is a member of the school committee, and in addition to that, he's doing some teaching.
Yep.
And some program development, and because of those two roles, there has to be, there has to be that kind of disclosure. So what we have to do as a board essentially is move to approve the disclosure by a special municipal employee of financial interest as a teacher in this activity. Court, of course, is a new member of the school board, a longstanding member of faculty that has taught.
Continuing yet, right.
And continuing yet, yeah.
And then I think this disclosure will be, assuming we approve it, will be filed with the clerk's office and the Ethics Commission.
State Ethics Commission. So there'll be a record of it. So any discussion? All right, I entertain a motion then.
I move to approve the disclosure by special municipal employee of financial interest in a municipal contract as required by General Law's Chapter 268A, Section 20D.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is Concord Housing Authority update on the Duro land. Who is going to, come on up. Welcome. And make sure wherever you sit that you pull a microphone close in and that the little green light is on. Tell us who you are, please.
I'm Maria Nelson. I'm the executive director of the Concord Housing Authority.
I'm Rick Eifler, the chair of the Housing Authority.
Welcome. We're ready for the update.
Okay, well, we had submitted a request for $50,000 from the ones that were appropriated at the town meeting. Can you hear me now? Okay. Under Article 23, for some redevelopment and construction costs for the Duro land that we received as part of the town's commitment to the affordable housing. Yes, that's, that's our update. Right now, we do not have the land yet. According to, so last I spoke with Marsha Rasmussen, she was waiting for another appraisal on the land before we could have the land transferred to our name, but I think she's working, they're working on that now.
Okay. And then, so you will come back to us after the land transfer has been made for the formal requested funds?
If that's, yeah, I suppose that would, we would have to wait for that before we can do anything.
You can't give me money for land you don't own.
I guess our preference would be to get approval for the money contingent on any property. We have the request in June for $50,000. If our timeline works out the way we'd like to, we'd like to get the property from the town by the end of summer and go out for, immediately go out for a request for the proposal, the design thing. Rather than, you know, get the tap, we get the parcel, and then wait for more meetings. I think that it would be nice to have the approval in hand for the design money so we can move ahead quickly. Everybody wants this thing to get built. I think this is the.
Maybe you could just very quickly, because I think there may be people watching or listening, who aren't, this thing, two seconds on what it is.
It's a, so the town purchased the Duro property in, last year. It's a large parcel that wraps around Warner's Pond in West Concord, starting with the driveway right off the common. When they purchased the property, they, the town identified the front half acre of that parcel as a potential site for affordable house, the only site for affordable house, according to the agreement with the purchase. The town meeting voted to give that parcel to the housing authority in order to build the house. It's tight fit. It will, it will need to go through several approvals. It needs zoning approval, it needs conservation approval, it needs, of course, building permits and all of that. So it'll be, it'll take, you know, all the way through fall, winter, maybe some, some in spring, depending on how things go, to get this through approval. So it'd be nice to start the design of the project so that we could also begin the permitting in terms of the Conservation Commission approval if it gets into winter and we can't finish the, you know, any mapping that needs to be done, and it can delay, you know, everything to the beginning of spring. So it would be nice to have some funds on hand to be able to go out for a request for the proposal. So we need two things to go out for a request for the proposal. We need the parcel, and we need the money. So it would be probably, we probably wouldn't go out for a request for the proposal until those two things happen.
So when you say, again, you expect to check titles to the property?
We expect that the town will figure, we don't know, the town takes to figure out how to give it to us. I think that's the trick, is if state rules on surplus property in terms of giving us the parcel, it needs to be assessed in a way that it can be declared surplus.
Yes, it has to be procured the way that.
So this is called a disposition of real property, and under Mass General Law 30B, we have to advertise it in the central register as a property valued at X dollars, and that we are taking this property and effectively giving it for $0 to another public entity. It's similar to what we've done in the past with other parcels. The one thing that wasn't mentioned, and I'm not sure if it, if it needs to be or not, but in the interest of full disclosure, is that we don't have anything from the state yet that gives us the right-of-way over, the eight-foot right-of-way over the Bruce-Freeman Rail Trail to get into the property. The Phase 2C is, has started very slowly. Phase 2B access agreement has been signed, or the lease agreement with the state. The state was unwilling to re-amend that agreement to include the eight-foot designation because they essentially had already had the paperwork done and felt like it would hold up the process. And because we don't want to hold up that part of the process, we didn't move forward with that. So now we have to look to have the 2B signed and then basically have it recorded and then immediately amend it to include the pass. We don't have any reason to think that they're not going to give that to us, but it would be difficult unless the housing authority wants to accept the property with the easement on it.
So we probably wouldn't.
Okay, what is your estimate that they would be able to?
We are at the mercy of the state. Unfortunately, it can take some time. We've been putting the pressure on because we have not only that access point, but we have three others where trails are going to mark up to that. So Marsha and I have been working pretty diligently on getting something like that. We'd like to be able to say it's by the end of summer. I expect it to have it by this time. So I'm disappointed.
Is that something that we would want to maybe tap our rep?
We have.
Okay.
That's how I got the, we have an unofficial, well, it's an official letter, but essentially saying, "We're going to get it, but what we need is, we need that piece of paper so that we can give up our access rights." So we're working at that. I'm working at that in my office. Marsha is working at the appraisal with Avery Associates on her side, and we really hope to have it done in, you know, a matter of weeks. We can control the Avery appraisal. We can control when we post it in the central register. I cannot control the speed of the state.
Linda, did you have a comment, or?
I think it's been answered. Yeah. I have a couple of questions. So just to remind some folks who might not remember, the source of this $50,000 that you're looking for is from Article 23 from last town meeting? And can you just explain very quickly what that article did and why this project qualifies under that?
So that article approved $500,000 to fund an affordable housing trust fund.
Right.
Which will eventually be monitored or controlled by a trust that's appointed by the town now.
Let me, that's not correct. Article 23 appropriated $500,000 of free cash to be dispersed by the town manager in support of affordable housing goals. So it not?
Didn't have anything to do with that.
Article 24 created the trust. I'm hearing from some of them.
Right. So Article 23 provided funds for projects just like this project, right? This is an affordable housing project. It's not going to be new funds. We've already appropriated the money, right? And this is just a comment you might maybe want to consider, since I'm looking at your timeline, it's really ambitious and really organized and everything, and you really want to get going, and there's things out of our control. You're probably working on the RFP so you have it ready to go, and it's possible, no? I mean, you could.
No, we don't need, we don't have the property, we don't have.
No, no, but you can start working on the RFP, right?
It won't take long to put together.
Right. I have, I think, heard of some cases, pretty sure, where you can actually issue the RFP. You just can't award it if you don't have the property and you don't have the funds. But you can have everything ready to go and even issue it. So if you really get held up, you might want to think about that. It's just an idea.
That's a possibility, right, yeah.
Let me just ask one question or just confirm what my understanding is once you're ready to launch the project, and that is that you intend to build one affordable housing unit which is adjacent to an existing property that you have, and that both properties will then be added to the town's SHI inventory? Is that, is that correct?
Yeah. Parcel is, again, about half an acre. It's not a buildable parcel on its own.
Right.
It needs to be combined with our existing house parcel on 365 North Mill to make a buildable parcel that can then have two houses on it under a planning board review that we can do as the housing authority, the RFP rules, forget what number, but we can then go, that's why we need to go through the planning board, because we have two units on one lot. So we are essentially pretty much the only ones who can build a house here.
And so then the other question I would ask is, it sounds like it does make sense to you to wait till you have the state approval for the access? Is that correct?
I mean, I haven't, nobody's mentioned that to the board as a whole. I mean, it's possible we could accept the parcel. I don't know how the parcel though could be drawn up with the easement officially enough to, to transfer if it wasn't approved, if the easement wasn't approved. I don't know. It would be tricky, maybe.
So my suggestion would be to move ahead and to let them design it, just knowing that we likely wouldn't be able to finalize the paperwork until we get something from the state. If we get to the point where we have the appraisal in. If we get to the point where we have the appraisal in, we've done what we needed to do and published it in the central register, they have a design and they're ready to go.
Right.
I think we push harder, which is effectively what we had to do before last year's town meeting. And I literally received that the day that that article was coming up because I drove to Boston and picked it up. So I, we could do that again. I just try to reserve the amount of times I have to barge in there and demand things. Once a year.
So what's your pleasure?
Well, I think Kate's laid out a plan that will move this process forward, and I recommend that we proceed with that.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
You want to try crafting a motion? Gotcha, huh?
Yeah. I guess.
I think it's simply that move to allocate $50,000 from funds made available from Article 23 at the town meeting in 2019 to housing. I think it's as simple as that because it's the town...
Rightly amendment to allow the town manager to...
Because it's the town managers...
Town manager with slight board approval.
Right, correct, right. Okay. I move that we allot $50,000 to the Concord Housing Authority for the development of, the design development for the unit that they're going to build on the Jurel property.
I think I need to mention the amount.
I think I said $50,000, yes, from Article 23, yeah.
All right, okay. All right, is that, is that reasonable, Kate? Is that...
As appropriated. I think you might want to say contingent on the formalized acceptance of the, or gifting and acceptance of the property.
Or in anticipation?
No.
Probably contingent.
Contingent, okay, let's add that.
I'm on the second, let's see it.
Yeah, second, right.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Good luck. Please keep us posted. We look forward to hearing from you. There's a, next item is a update on a long-range plan. It's just my way of introducing the fact that we are working on three broad sets of initiatives that come out of the envisioned Concord Long Range Plan. One, we'll hear from in a little while, which is a discussion about economic vitality. We'll also hear a discussion in a little while about capital planning initiative. But tonight, the first item that we're going to hear about is an initiative that we took at last year's annual town meeting we were just talking about, passing four warrant articles, all in support of the town's affordable housing goals. And in addition to those warrant articles, other committees in town have been working very hard to be supportive of those kinds of initiatives and introduce additional initiatives of their own. And our planning board is one of those organizations that have been working very hard on that. And I thought it would be constructive for us and constructive for folks listening if we invited the planning board to come talk to us about what they're doing. So Matt and your colleagues, all are welcome to come up. And just make sure you've got a microphone somewhere close to your mouth when you start talking.
Thanks, I'm in stereo now. We actually have a handout. I don't know if you have copies already.
We do, but the first thing you have to do is introduce yourself.
Take a copy. I'm Matt Johnson. I'm the chair of the planning board. And I'm joined here by my colleagues. You can introduce themselves.
I'm Nathan Bossett.
And then Kate.
Kate McAnaney.
Great.
So...
Welcome.
So we're here before you tonight, just in the spirit of cross-town cooperation and consultation, to discuss what we're working on relative to housing. And as you had already mentioned, we, you know, have already as a town done a lot of work on the statutory affordable housing, the SHI inventory type of housing. And you just saw with the Concord Housing Authority, you know, we'll be working with them to use the PRD bylaw to get their units on Commonwealth Avenue. But there is another whole dimension that, to the housing issues in Concord, that is also addressed in the comprehensive long-range plan that is beyond our state housing inventory. And that is about generating less expensive, though not technically affordable, housing that better matches the evolving needs of our community. And so I think as is well documented in the comprehensive long-range plan, our household sizes are tending to decline. So we need more small units, fewer large units. Community members have wished for the opportunity to age in place. And so as their households change from those that have children at home to being empty nesters, to be able to reconfigure their homes to accommodate others and use the space they have without having to move. And then there's been a lot of discussion about smart growth and the opportunity to locate housing closer to our village centers so that residents can walk to their transportation, to their shopping and so on, rather than jump in cars to go everywhere. Now, the big challenge for all of those changes is to do all of that without, A, requiring any financial subsidies, such as we have to spend for truly affordable housing, and then B, maintaining neighborhood character. So we, you know, everyone loves the village scale and density that we have. And so how do you create more units without creating an ugly eyesore? So the comprehensive long-range plan goals, as you see under Housing, Section 4.3 of the plan, gave us some guidance there. And you might wonder, well, what happened to Goals 1 through 4? Well, those are the ones that relate to affordable housing, neighborhood conservation districts, you know, and also cross-committee and private-public partnerships. But Goals 5 and 6 are the ones that are very zoning-related. And that's, of course, what we do as a planning board, is focus on zoning. So the things that they recommended in their goals were to amend the two-family or additional dwelling unit bylaws to make them more inclusive, to adopt natural resource protection zoning, which would make better use of the open space whenever we have a planned residential development. And then to look at transit-oriented developments, in particular at the Thoreau Depot District. So as you see in the bottom right of our handout, we have indeed have tackled all of those things this year. And of course, it's far too much for one year, but it's a way to at least get started. And we got a running start this year, thanks to our previous chair, Gary Kleiman. And we have now already kind of ruled out one of these initiatives, and we have some thoughts about the others. So...
Busy year.
Yeah. And I mean, I feel very fortunate that, you know, here we are sitting before you and it's still July, talking about this, rather than October, you know? So that's why I think we actually have a fighting chance to do some significant work this year on this issue. So I think the first, and perhaps the initiative has gotten the most positive feedback so far, I mean, it's almost universal. I can't think of anybody that's had a bad thing to say about this yet. We'll see. But it's the accessory dwelling units bylaw. So in our bylaw today, it's actually very difficult to create an accessory dwelling unit. You actually have to, if you make any physical change to your site, then you have to wait two years, and then you can make an accessory dwelling unit.
For the, for folks who might not know, an accessory dwelling unit is...
Yes, so it is one in which you have a primary unit that is your home, and then you have a less, a smaller-sized unit that's either an integral part of the building or in an outbuilding that is accessory to your primary residential use. Okay? And so it's a separate residence. It has, you know, bathing and cooking and, you know, that, and sleeping accommodations. And today, actually, you know, under our bylaw, it's varied, we have basically single-family zoning in the residential districts. I mean, other than, you know, planned residential developments that, you know, and in the business districts where we can have mixed use, it's single-family homes. So unless you have an older home that kind of predates zoning, that could have an accessory dwelling in it, it's very difficult to add one. And the other thing, you'll see the right column of this table, is even though there are many two-family residences, duplexes around town, you'll notice that they're all really old. And that's because they are not legal under our zoning. So, you know, what we've done is we've looked at both of these options. So the accessory dwelling and the two-family, and we thought about, okay, if we make it easier for a property owner to create an accessory dwelling unit, what would be the terms under which we do that? Okay? So, and we looked at the bylaws of other towns. I mean, you know, and there were some pretty hilarious ones where, for example, sometimes, you know, euphemism for an accessory dwelling is an in-law apartment. And there, in Shrewsbury, it must be occupied by a in-law. Okay? So it's literally an in-law apartment. Okay? So, you know, we looked at all of these kinds of things and we said, you know, look, what's important is that for an accessory dwelling, one of the two units, either the primary or accessory, does need to be owner-occupied, but there doesn't need to be any kind of relationship, familial relationship among those residents. The unit, one of the units can be rented, but it may not be sold. At that point, it'd be like a condo. It wouldn't really be an accessory dwelling. It can, though, be in a detached structure. Today, you actually have to connect accessory. It has to be an integral part of the building. And in fact, we have even tightened those regulations over the recent years because of the pergola thing. I don't know if you've heard about all that over the years. But now we'd relax that. We'd allow outbuildings to be converted.
So an apartment over a garage?
Absolutely, yes. And in fact, Mr. Bossett here has set our parameters around these accessory dwellings using that example. So, and as I work my way down here, the dimensional requirements, this is one key for neighborhood character, keep all the same dimensional requirements. So we don't allow more liberal, you know, you can build out more of the property if you have an accessory dwelling or something. It should look and feel like any other residence in the, in the community. But the minimum size, we have a standard minimum size of 350 square feet in our bylaw. We don't actually know why or where that came from, but we didn't mess with that. As far as the maximum size, we thought that you could have by right 750 square feet as an accessory dwelling. So right now, it's only special permit and all these very special conditions, but we thought of by right, if you have a conforming property, would be okay. And in fact, it would encourage, again, the development of these. But then if you wanted to go over 750 square feet, where it would be perhaps more prominent, we thought that you'd need a special permit to do that. Then no other kinds of special restrictions. We did, though, say if you have a non-conforming lot and you're expanding it, well, you have to get a special permit anyway if you go over 50% increase. So what we're saying is, yes, and you also need to get your, if you're doing accessory dwelling to do that, you need to get that approved by the ZBA. So, and then the final thing, when talking with Lincoln, Lincoln has an accessory dwelling unit bylaw, but theirs, you have to renew every three years. So, you know, it's a little bit tough that you're under suspense of having, you know, losing this. And also, we have several special permits that do not transfer with the property owner, including the current accessory dwelling. So again, we feel like...
Say that again?
They do not transfer when the property transfers title. So if, if you sell your house and it had an accessory dwelling, no more does it have one until it gets re-approved.
Re-permitted.
That's right. So we felt that that was too restrictive as well. So just, that covers off on accessory dwellings. And I just, before I move on to other initiatives, I just thought I'd ask for discussion or other comments from my colleagues here.
Well, my question is, I mean, I think it's great, is the anticipation that you would see building or conversion? I mean, trying to think whether I would be thinking about adding then on, you know, converting a garage upstairs or taking the back of the existing house and redoing it to...
We see both. And I think that we would also see...
Doesn't discriminate.
You know, there are a number of outbuildings, you know, like barns, garages, that are, you know, and as we look at the literature for this, they're very well-suited to this. They've been very successful. The one issue we do have to watch out for is that a lot of these accessory buildings can be as little as five feet away from a property line. So you can imagine, if you put a second story on an accessory thing to put up an apartment and your tenant is overlooking the fence to the, you know, next house, that could be pretty, you know, invasive. So what we've done is we've said that, you know, by right, you can only do something that's within the setback requirements of the primary structure. That if you're doing an accessory structure, you need a special permit. Because there are cases where it'd be perfectly fine, you know, a lot is way back in the woods, whatever, you can be as close to the property line as you want, but...
What about, I noticed there's no indication of how many bedrooms. I mean, what, is there a thought process about...
Yeah, I don't know if others want to comment on that.
Well, I think the thought is that it's sort of self-constraining if the limit is between 750 and 1,000 square feet. There's only so much you could, you know, it's basically a one-bedroom apartment, generous...
Or two. It's not, you know, unless you have a rabbit warrant, yeah.
I'm just anticipating that, I'm looking at a school committee member sitting back there. I mean, we are all assuming a certain use.
Yeah.
But, and I applaud this wholeheartedly, but it is, you know...
Well, one of the things we look at is, again, that it's an owner-occupied situation. So...
Sorry, I have a question. What is the...
Excuse me.
Okay. Any other comments on accessory dwellings?
And cars, have you given thought to that?
Yeah, so I think that we felt that for accessory dwellings, it was less of a concern. I think that when we get into two families, it becomes much more of a concern. I mean, so we don't have any special restrictions that we've proposed around parking.
And I would also say for the two-family houses, that's also constrained to within a, for the time being, a half-mile radius or half-mile distance from any of the town or transportation centers. And so the thought being is that we're not, we're trying to dissuade people from using cars.
Well, I know what your intention is, but that sometimes doesn't happen.
Yeah, of course, of course.
I just think of a two-bedroom facility that I've created above my garage and rent to four single folks who are working in town here, and that, and they all have cars. Now I've got four cars plus my cars, I've got six cars, all of a sudden, right?
Well...
I know.
Yeah. I mean, I think that, yeah, the, the hope here, again, is to make, you know, you still have the floor area ratio that's going to limit the size of the structures, that the, that doing this kind of privileges residential space over garage space now because, you know, you can only have so much building on your lot. And that, yeah, I mean, maybe you could have a lot of cars, but if they, you get too many cars that get each other's way, it's not going to be very appealing to tenants, so...
So this will, just staying with the accessory dwelling units, if you continue along the path here on now, this will come to the town as a warrant article at town meeting.
In the 2020 town meeting, yeah. Right. So we would, our next steps on this is August 6, we have a joint meeting with the zoning board of appeals. Because again, you know, some of these special permits would be coming before them, and, you know, we certainly don't want to just pile them on with work. Some of this, doing it by right, kind of does obviate that to some degree, right? So that's the hope.
August, August 7.
Is it 7? Oh, okay.
So...
Excuse me. I almost went to the wrong meeting. Okay.
Just one last question. Has there been any discussion about the, the property tax assessed per build? I mean, in other words, you've changed potentially some of the uses.
Well, I think that, no, the use will still be a residential use. And I think that the... the Board of Assessors will, over time, understand how to value these.
I'm just wondering if they've weighed in at all.
They have not, no.
That might be down the road.
Worth checking in.
Something to get Lane to weigh in on that to see what, you know, if you had X number of square feet that were complying with this, what might it mean or?
Yeah, I mean, there are existing accessory dwelling units in town, so there's a precedent for the value of these things. Yeah.
All right. Two-family.
So two-families. So the, the attraction of two-families is that it is a historical pattern of development in town. So it's not going to, like, stand out like a sore thumb if someone builds a two-family or converts their home to a two-family. So, and yet, you get two households on the same lot. And right now, I mean, other than the concrete housing authority, you may not have two houses on one lot. They, they get it out. There's a special clause in the bylaw that lets affordable, 75% or more affordable projects get, put two houses in one lot. Now, so that's one thing, but then they really, those two families only exist in the, near the village centers. So that's why we stipulated that we feel like if we do two families, they should also just be in the, in that area, typically around, you know, resident C perhaps. And we're still debating whether we do an overlay district with a half-mile or three-quarter mile, or we just say resident C can have two families. Okay? It's a lot simpler to just say resident C, but it's not exactly the same thing. Now, the, the other beauty of two-families is, you know, we have a real, you know, shortage of various types of housing in town and especially rental housing. This, unlike the accessory dwelling units, would be unrestricted in terms of ownership. So you could have condoized, you could have them rented and have be an absentee owner, you could own and rent, you know, all of that. So it's very flexible that way. But the buildings, the units must be part of the same structure. So we're not going to allow sort of condos with external structures. The same floor area ratio setbacks, et cetera. One of the biggest issues, though, is, I think, that we just zero in on this, is the whole business of sewer hookup. Because now you have two units, potentially two sewer hookups. We have not talked to Public Works yet. That's on our list of things to do for this. The other, I think, big issue standing in front of this one is economic viability. Because we have seen more cases of people taking their two families and converting them into single families. You know, are the economics there to really encourage people to build two families even if they could? Or, or convert their single families to two families if they could? We don't know. But the, the option's really not available, so it's very hard to say. And again, you know, the economic environment can change, which will, could sway things. So this is one that we, again, we want to talk with realtors, with developers and see, well, okay, you know, if you could get two, two $700,000 units on there instead of one, 1.3 million dollar unit, you know, you make a little more money, maybe, but the costs are going to be higher, too. So.
What's the sweet spot?
Yeah, or can we make it sweet enough that anyone uses this? If no one's going to use it, why have it? You know? But-
So one of the likely pushbacks on this one would be how the two-family fits in with the existing neighborhood. So have you had a chance to talk about imposing some kind of design standards? I mean, I, I look at Hubbard Street, for example.
Yeah.
Many of those larger houses converted to two-family.
Yeah. And it's a perfectly nice street.
Exactly.
I used to live in one of those.
Yeah.
So, the, yes, well, what we did there was, at least by default right now, we're expecting to have a special permit requirement for all two-families. So basically, neighbors would be able to weigh in, they'd have to go through a special permit process. That said, you know, we also are a little concerned that, like, well, if you put a special permit hurdle in front of it, is that going to further dissuade the creation of any? So it's a tough one. And, and we talked about maybe garages, people really worried about, they've seen a pattern of, you get these, they're attached units, but the two units are here with a wall of garages in between them.
The attachment is the garage.
Yeah, well, so we want to have something like a party wall or something of, between the resident units required or something. Well, I mean, we truly mean duplex when we say duplex, not, you know, some weird-
Yeah, so you have to be thinking about both new construction as well as conversion.
That's right.
Yeah.
Restricting it to resident C or some-
Yes.
That would mean everything is on town sewer.
Yes.
So there wouldn't be any septic-
Right.
System kind of issue.
Right.
Yeah, I would encourage you to talk to Alan Cathcart.
Yeah.
Because, you know, one of the, one of the complaints, I guess in fairness, one of the complaints we've heard in the business districts is the sewer hookup fees if you're adding seating, like for restaurants and things like that.
Yeah.
So if you're adding bathrooms, I suppose it's kind of the same thing. It's not, not a trivial expense.
Well, it could also be a new physical-
Yeah, could be, absolutely.
So it's, it's expense all the way around.
Well, and that, that runs true for all the utilities. I mean, the, you know, whether it's the-
Yeah, but there's a, there's a real significant sewer hookup fee for, at least for businesses when they're adding seats to restaurants and things like that.
Yeah.
That's great.
Any comments on two-families?
So this would be within half a mile of the village centers or in resident C? Or did I hear you say it could be anywhere if it's by special permit?
No, no, the accessory dwelling units would be anywhere in town, but the two-families would only be either in an overlay district, it was a half-mile circle around the village centers, or they'd be resident C.
So I did hear a half-mile to three-quarters, depending-
Yeah, well, we, we looked at three-quarters. Yeah, we, we looked at three-quarters.
Determined on that, we, yeah.
Yeah, still working on that.
Yeah.
And just to clarify, so the three centers would be Concord Center, the Road Depot, and West Concord.
Yeah.
So what is the process right now if somebody wants to do a two-family?
There is no process. They cannot have one.
Not by special permit?
No. There's no provision for two-families in our bylaw.
So either you're grandfathered in somewhat, legally?
Yes. I mean, you know, in our, in the residential districts, I should say, you know, because if you're a part of a PRD, there are two-family, you know, there are duplex and triplex units as part of a PRD, but that's a whole different thing. I mean, if you're a property owner, you may not have a two-family.
Elizabeth?
Did I say something wrong?
Get a microphone. Identify yourself, please.
Thank you. Elizabeth Hughes, Concord Town Planner. So currently in the zoning bylaw, section 4.2.2.1, you can have a, you buy special permit. If you have a structure that was built before 1929, which is when zoning was adopted, you can go forward and you can create a two-family dwelling, whether that is in an existing house and you want to turn it into a two-family, or whether you have a old barn that was built in, you know, 1900 and you can buy special permit, can get a, turn that into a two-family. So there are properties in towns where they converted the house to a two-family and then had a detached barn and turned that into a two-family as well. That generally happens on some of the larger lots in town, not in the smaller towns. But an example, on Pine Street, there was the, the house and an, an old barn. They went forward, got a special permit to pick up the barn. They moved the barn a few feet, converted the barn into a dwelling, and then by condo divided, divided the property. And so there's, it's basically two single-family dwellings on, that was created on one lot. But somebody could have done that as well with an existing farmhouse. Divide a large farmhouse into a two-family, condo it, and sell off each.
And, and we would be seeking to eliminate the loophole that would allow you to create four units.
I was going to say, multiples.
And I was mixing up the two-family with the accessory dwelling, because if you predate, I thought it was, I was considering that an accessory, but I guess it's a two-family technically. I don't think even the term two-family is stated in the bylaw there.
No, it's actually stated as an additional-
Dwelling unit. Okay, so it's not an accessory, it's not a two-family, it's an additional.
Dwelling unit.
Okay.
All right.
All right. So shall I proceed to the next one? So this is related to planned residential developments. So I think we, as a board, and other members of the community that we've talked to, have not been always thrilled with the proposals we've gotten for planned residential developments. And there are various aspects of them that we haven't liked. So what we thought was, while we're at it, let's see if we can fix some of those. And what we, we divided it into kind of two groups. So one was what we call sort of the village PRD. That means those that are near to town. And, you know, for those, you really want to encourage a more walkable kind of community. And if you have a developer that comes in and insists that every unit must have a two-guard garage, that just doesn't create that feeling. Okay? Especially when you're packing the units together, as you do in a PRD, it just becomes a, you know, a wall of garages. So we, you know, wanted to look at how you could help with that. And then we also have a strong commitment in town to greater sustainability. And so we were looking at trying to improve energy efficiency and yet not conflict with the building code. And so perhaps the idea of incentives for that. But when we looked at this village PRD concept a little closer, we ran into one big problem. And that was that the whole town in, in that vicinity is fully built out. There are not really any eligible lots of this size that would qualify as a PRD that aren't in the floodplain for the majority of their, their, you know, their space, that could be developed into a PRD. So, I mean, we literally found two. So it seemed kind of a folly to create a bylaw that would only apply to two properties in town. So we kind of put that one aside. Now, as far as the other concept for a PRD, which is what we call the open space PRD, this is more generally in town. The original concept of a PRD was to preserve open space by allowing more clustered development housing. And so here, the idea was, well, our recent developments, a lot of times, people would put this open space around the perimeter of the lot or down, you know, put, you know, the parts of the lot that, you know, wouldn't be ever used, really. And that's really against the spirit of the PRD, so we wanted to tighten up the language there. And there is actually a type of bylaw called natural resource protection zoning, and there's also limited development, there's other terms for this, open space zoning. So that where you start with an inventory of the property, highlight the spots that should be preserved as open space and then build the housing around that. So that's what we're looking at. We haven't gotten very far in that discussion. So that's just saying, we're, we're still going with that, still looking at incentives for, you know, sustainability, that kind of thing. And then finally, we had not even dreamed that we would do this last one, but we, in fact, we had given up already that Thoreau Depot, this area is one of the areas in town that's most ripe for redevelopment. I think that, you know, while there's a lot of sensitivity to changing the look and feel of most parts of town, that's one that I think people could get behind, the area including Crosby's Market and, and the, the business district around the depot. And it's ideally suited to what's called transit-oriented development. So that means low, you know, mixed use, where you have residence, office and business, you know, retail use, all clustered right around a transit, transit center. And so we don't have the technical expertise to figure out how to do that, but luckily, the MAPD, so the Metropolitan Area, was it Planning?
Metropolitan Area Planning Council.
Planning, yeah. So they, they actually came through with a grant for technical assistance on this. We're, we're going to get, then assess this this year, and then it won't likely result in anything for town meeting in 2020, but probably 2021. So we'll probably come out with a report or something out of the grant and, and go from there. So that's what we're doing. And sorry, I've been so long-winded.
The last one seemed really complicated. Good.
Oh, yeah, potentially great.
Really complicated.
Right. And, and one that will touch every other piece of the long-range plan.
Yeah, and so we have a little bit of something for everyone here, you know? That's the, the village, the, yeah, everything, so.
Well, great. Questions? Comments?
Comments, yeah. Hi, I've been observing, you're one of the committees that I observe, and in the beginning, I thought it was so overly ambitious of you to take all this on, but it's been so impressive to watch how you've come to consensus as a group and, and come up with these very specific recommendations. So I, I'm excited to hear what happens now and, and what, what ends up on the warrant for town meeting and then for the depot the following year. So good work.
Well, I don't want to put her on the spot, but our, our town planner has said that by our ZBA joint meeting, she hopes to have a draft bylaw for us to look at for at least accessory dwellings.
Awesome.
Good.
Wonderful.
Fabulous. Other comments or questions? I think the, I, I have a comment on that last, the sort of the depot business district kind of thing. You know, that is also something that, we think about affordable housing-
Yeah.
Sense in which you were talking about it. But this almost comes to be something that we could talk about under the umbrella of economic development.
Oh, absolutely.
Because it, you know, it really would require some sound economic underpinnings to be able to have the accessory parts of the things that we would want, like housing and-
Yeah.
To do. So that might be something we could pick up later this evening, we'll be talking about initiative around economic vitality, which has economic development, sustainability to retail areas and tourism wrapped up in it. So.
Yeah.
Maybe pick that back up again. Other comments or questions?
Other, as you may know, even though, depending on how you model this area, there are new innovation grants from the state for subsidized affordable housing in mixed development situations. So, you know, there's, I, I think there's support out there, depending on which direction you go.
Well, I think that's why the MAPC is pretty crucial to all this, they can navigate through all of those programs.
Yeah. It's exciting, all the work you're doing. And, and the, the pace that you're operating at, that, you know, you're taking this seriously and charging ahead. Very good.
Yeah, we're grateful to you because-
Yeah, we are.
Subjects like we're trying to take on, like vitality, transportation, affordable housing. These are all really complicated issues. I mean, Concord is a kind of a small town, but nevertheless.
Yeah.
And so it's going to have to be approached by a lot of different committees. NRC is going to have to be involved in planning, ZBA, Historic Commission, and HDC, all of them. So I'm grateful to you for the leadership on this. This is, this is great, and we'll look forward to seeing the draft. But as important a topic as this is, I wanted just to ask if anybody has a quick question or a quick comment in the audience? Yes, but you know, it was a drill, you got to come up. And I saw your hand up earlier, so you come next.
Okay, I can-
Nope.
She's all right.
All right.
Carlin Reed, 83, Wisconsin. Yes, I know the drill. I've had the pleasure of attending these meetings, and I must say, this committee is doing the yeoman's work on creating something that's rather new. One question I've been asking and I have not yet heard yet is an evaluation of the impact that this will have on the town's character in the context of how many, currently, how many affordable, how many additional units we have right now, accessory units right now, and how many two-family units we have right now, plus how many more are expected to occur if they could do a crystal ball approach with these new proposals?
Yeah, and we have tried to do some- Yeah, and we have tried to do some work to track down what we have in the way of accessory dwellings and two families. Believe it or not, it's not easy. And we're not quite sure yet, or do you have a sense now?
So, I am working with the town assessor.
The assessor would probably do.
And through our geographic information system. So, I think we're close to having, it's gonna be a ballpark on what, we can definitely say how many two families are out there, but as far as accessory dwellings, it'll be a good ballpark. I don't think there will be any way to project how many units this could possibly be. If we're talking accessory dwelling units, then it could be every single family dwelling in town could do this if they choose. If it's just two-family, then it's just the number of parcels in the residency zone, which I'm in support of that and not a no.
Yeah, and I mean, I do think that there is a kind of a limiting factor, the number, I mean, it's not gonna have a thousand of these built in one year. You know, you look at the number of building permits. So, it's very hard to estimate, but I do know that we have fewer than 300. I know that there were fewer than 300 rows by the time you took out like religious institutions and such.
And in your.
Today.
In looking at other towns that have.
Well, that's the other thing, yeah.
I'm just wondering what they saw, if there's any reference point.
Well, you know, we got a report on the state of housing in Massachusetts in the bylaws, and I have to say, when we were trying to find examples of things for accessory dwellings, what we found was mostly negative examples, not positive examples. I mean, there've been clearly a lot of zoning in the past that was trying to exclude or limit this pattern of development. There's very little, very recently, there's been a real sea change, and you start to see, you know, out west, there's a ton of this going on right now. But, yeah, it's still early days.
So, you mentioned Lincoln earlier. I guess they, their bylaw is fairly recent.
Yes.
Yeah.
But they're saying they're really lamenting the three-year thing.
Well, thank you all very much for coming this evening and sharing this with us, and we'll look forward to hearing from you soon.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent, thanks a lot. Next order of business this evening, excuse me, is a review of our Economic Vitality Committee charge. So, I'll turn it over to Susan.
Thank you. After the feedback from last meeting and other feedback that we've received, I revised the draft. The main change that I made to the purpose and goals was to, oh, explore and make recommendations about the role of transportation in accomplishing the goals. In terms of the committee membership, I had, the original proposal suggested seven members, and we got a lot of feedback from board members and from citizens about that they, everyone felt that was a little bit too restrictive. So, went back and looked at it again and came up with a total of 13 members instead of seven. And the membership shall be as follows. Two commercial property owners that can be from any of the four retail districts, as it was pointed out to us, we had not included Nine Acre Corner as a retail district and, of course, should have. So, two commercial property owners, two owner-manager, owner slash managers of local businesses from any of those four retail districts, two representatives of local historical or cultural institutions like museums or the umbrella or the national park, the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce or designee, one representative of the planning department or designee, the new town visitor and tourism manager, and right off the bat, right onto a committee, and four community members. The rest of the duties of the committee, the elect a chair, keep minutes, all of the compliance with open meeting and public records laws are included. And the committee or advisory group will analyze the goals and reports to the select board with specific recommendations that can be implemented to support the goals. And I'm open to feedback from any and all.
We heard a lot last week, which is really good, out there from so many folks. And I've been, as somebody, I know I've been meeting, not regularly, but occasionally with some of the business folks in town, and I'm meeting again with them later this week, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Susan is going to join us, and so, that'll be good. But I think it's a great improvement in the draft. Or do you think we're ready to approve the charge, or?
I have a question, though. What is the term?
Oh, the term three years.
Okay, so, it's not a task force that's going to, it's going to be an ongoing committee, then? Is that right? Or?
I think that can be determined at the end of the term, sort of like we discussed with capital planning. It might, you know, evolve into some, something longer term, but as a first step.
Well, I think that if it's, if we're talking about a standing committee at the outset, then it shouldn't be called an vitality advisory group, right? We should make it a committee.
I don't, well, I guess, I was thinking that once we get all the, the idea was to get all these stakeholders around the same table to discuss the issues, and that it may or may not be ongoing. I don't know if it's gonna be ongoing.
But if our charge is three years.
Three years.
Then it.
It's not a task force.
It's gonna be three years unless when this group gets together, they come back to us and say something like, well, it shouldn't be.
Yeah.
We would be required then to amend the charge, right? And that amendment could.
Right. So, what would you suggest?
Committee.
Committee, okay.
I mean, I guess it depends also if we want them to bring some kind of recommendations back to us before three years, you know?
Like periodic updates with the select board? No, no? At least annually, something like that?
I would like to see it be annually. I think one of the, when we started this, the idea, well, when we started this, one of the hopes was that we, as a select board, could get this in the hands of folks who would have more detailed understanding of the issue, represent the town, and be able to get back to us with some actions that we could take.
Right.
I don't want to wait three years.
Right.
No, no. Exactly.
So, I would hope that they would no, report back to us no later than a year from now.
A year from now.
Right.
Because time, timing again gets to be, you know, it'd be nice right now if we had, after the planning committee, if we had our Economic Vitality Committee reporting to us, that would give us time to process it, and if there were warrant articles that needed to be crafted, to get them done in time to meet the next town meeting.
Meeting calendar.
Deadline. So, I think.
So, in the past, when we've had report back to us, you know, no longer than a year, that we, the charge was for a year essentially, and then at the end of that time, if we felt they needed to be.
Extended.
Extended, we did, as opposed to a three-year term.
So, should we, yeah, I'm open to.
I'm not, I don't, it doesn't matter that much to me, but whether it's a long-term standing committee or not, I don't know. But even if they come back and report to us next July, I know there's gonna be knockoff issues that they're still gonna have to deal with because of complexity of, it's like if affordable, if the planning folks were our committee, and they're, you know, we said, do this, and they keep doing it, you know, it's gonna be a while, so I don't care so much. But I think I would like to indicate, we expect us to be a longer-term committee.
So, no, so you're saying a year from now, so anticipating that there would be no specific action that would come from this year's town meeting, but perhaps by the next?
Oh, I think the timing is such that.
Yeah, okay.
If there, if there is something, it'll be something that bubbles up if the, I don't see anything inappropriate. If the committee got together and they came, said, wait a minute, here's something we can do right now, let's go on with it, that's fine.
Well, there is one thing that they might come up with right away, because in the long-range plan and in some other documents I've read, and talking with the Concord Business Group, it seems like what always comes up is they would like to see the town ask town meeting to fund an economic development coordinator. And I'm personally not sure that that's the right route to go, because we've just hired quite a few other people in town, and we want to kind of have sustainable growth. And I'm hoping that this committee, I mean, we do have in here that they're supposed to explore and recommend alternative ways, such as public-private partnerships of grants or whatever. So, I'm hoping that they don't just come back to us in a month and say, well, you've gotta go right back to town meeting.
Well, I don't think we should tell them what to do.
Right.
Put the committee in.
Right.
Place and let them do their.
Right. I'm just saying what I'm hoping is, in my opinion.
It also says, make recommendations as to how the town can support the business districts with existing resources. So, that's sort of addresses that. I wanted to just make one more point. One of the things that came up, and it was in the context of your reporting last meeting about people's concern about stewardship of our town and its many resources, is, there's nothing specific in here about that, but my feeling underlying it, I just thought it was a given that every one of us is a steward, I mean, is responsible for teaching people about our town and helping to protect it. And I don't, this isn't intended to open a floodgate to tourists that we don't already have. The idea is to, tourists are coming because we have these very significant historical objects and sites in our town. And my, my thinking behind it was to be able to have these people spend more time in the town centers in Concord and make that part of their experience staying here, not at all to double it or triple it or anything like that, but just to better, craft a better experience for tourists that benefits a lot of stakeholders.
I think we talked about it in the context of balance, that we were interested in maintaining the character of the downtown, and we were interested in doing these things that would help, but it was trying to maintain that balance. So, I think that's the concept. All right. So, with those amendments, are we in a position to approve this?
Yeah.
Why don't you?
Sure.
Do the honors.
I move that we adopt the charge for the Economic Vitality Committee as amended.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Hi. Susan, thank you very much.
Great.
So, I would just remind our listeners, do we have listeners?
I don't know, as of.
I got a text that we were, it was not being broadcast.
Not being broadcast, and it was unclear that that could be remedied from the booth.
Okay, well, so, I'm sure Kate will look into that for us. Anyway, somebody may have listened to the recording of it. I would just encourage all of you folks out there that have been listening to our discussions about economic vitality to get your green cards in. We'll be trying to get this committee populated just as quickly as you can, and those committees or organizations that were responsible for coming up with a representative or designee, I would encourage them, as well as the planning board and Chamber of Commerce, as I recollect. Right, thank you very much, Susan, for your leadership. Next item on the agenda is a review and approve the capital planning committee charge. Turn it over to Terry.
Okay, so, I had a few thoughts on this latest draft. I've incorporated most of the changes that we discussed last time, including making it a task force to decide on the process of capital planning, and the proposed term of office is now six months in this draft. And there's two crucial items that I want to talk about that I left in from the previous drafts. And I left them in because I feel that if we don't have these two crucial items, we shouldn't even be doing the effort at all. They're like the real guts of it. And the two crucial items are the membership of the committee and deciding how we're gonna merge these templates. So, first of all, regarding the membership, several people recommended, including more citizens at large, and I've done that with relevant backgrounds, as suggested by Linda and others. But also, I've left in officials from the finance committee, the school committee, and the select board, because in my opinion, we need participation from these three major groups. We need them to have a buy-in, they need to discuss how to do capital planning and come to some kind of agreement on how this process is gonna work. Because if they all buy into the same process, then we have some momentum and it will succeed. If we can't even agree on the process, if there's not a buy-in from all three groups, then I'm really not sure it's worth doing. And secondly, I think the same thing about collecting the data and formatting into the template, that's all well and good, but also, we need some kind of way to prioritize and time the projects. So, last meeting, we discussed how the select board would fill out one template, and the school committee would fill out another template, and then somehow, the templates would get merged. One idea was that each year, the select board would figure out how to merge them. So, I've been thinking about that, and I'm not really sure that's gonna work. I really think that, again, we need agreement from the three leadership groups, the school committee, the select board, and the finance committee. We need agreement when we come up with some kind of a process, that's the charge of this group, to figure out how to get these templates merged. So, I just really believe that if we're gonna do the capital planning at all, let's do it right, let's have it, have some ability to succeed, make a process that the town is able and willing to do. So, that is what's in this latest draft here.
Well, just a comment, first of all, the select board isn't going to do it. The town is going to do it.
Right.
And the school is going to do it, not the school committee. So, I mean, these are tasks, capital planning tasks are done by the town and the school.
Right.
And they are presented to the select board or presented to the school committee as part of the process, but the actual task of doing it is not done by the select board or the school.
No, right.
Well, that's what you said, so I'm just.
Oh.
Kicking off on that. Second, we have a very clear ruling from the town clerk that the finance committee is welcome to be there as liaison, but they are not, and they are not a policymaking body in the town. Their job is to look at budgets presented by the town and the school and make judgments based on the guidelines they establish, using whatever procedure that they establish, and make those kind of recommendations to the towns and the schools as they're formulating in the budget, and then ultimately to town meeting. So, I think it's important to have a finance committee at the table because they know a lot, and they've got a point of view.
Right.
But they have to come there as a liaison.
Correct. This draft, this draft does say that.
You talked about them in parallel.
Well, right, I.
It's not.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, that struck me as well, because, I mean, just from a public process perspective, the select board and the school committee are both voted.
Right.
And we all had to become elected, everybody in Concord had a choice about who is here, whereas the, the finance committee.
They're appointed.
Is appointed.
Correct.
So, I think there's great respect for the opinions.
Um, so I think there's great respect for the opinions that are issued by all three bodies and certainly of the FinCom. I don't see the, is it, we're, I think we're trying to, I heard a level playing field amongst three bodies, and I don't think that's the way we operate together.
Okay. Well, I guess what I'm thinking is, if you have a process where one of these groups isn't buying in, I just don't think the process will work as well. It's going to work a lot better if you can get agreement among the, whether you consider them parallel or you don't, or somewhere elected, appointed. I still think that all these groups recommend to town meeting. And if they can go into town meeting united, presenting the same plan.
That's great.
That's what, that's what I think the goal of this should be.
Well, there's no point in having a committee if not to try to put something together.
Right. That's all, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I think it's important to differentiate the roles of various organizations and groups within the town.
Okay.
And, uh, but otherwise, I think this is, I think it's great. I still think, when you were talking, I want to be clear, the way I saw this happening was this committee will do its work, and part of their work will be to ex, to develop a way that these plans will be integrated.
Oh, great. Exactly. I didn't quite hear that last week, but that's what's in this draft.
Yeah.
Perfect.
That, I mean, it's not just a process. It's conditions. Uh, it's not just a process, do A, B, C, D, and then hand it to Jane and.
Exactly.
Say goodbye.
Right.
It's, here's the things we need to have in a capital plan. We need to have this level of detail about that. We need to have ti, I don't know what it is. I'm not on the committee. And it's going to have to be integrated in a timing sense. It's not going to be integrated in a capital sense. A, a school committee building is going to cost X, a town building is going to cost Y. They're not related. Uh, but when they show up on the capital plan, that's the, that's the thing we want to try to get, the timing of it. So the committee is going to explain in their work how that's going to get accomplished.
Perfect.
Yes. So the use of the, the terminology in, you know, the integration, I mean, I think communicates, um, very clearly. So capturing that word, I think, will help. Um, one question I had, and forgive me for, um, this is a basic question, but after, um, I read this, I started, um, wondering if I understood it correctly. And when you talk about developing a, um, a, a template format, you're, are you using that terminology in terms of also compiling actual projects and estimated costs and so forth? I thought you were, but.
Right. In, in the duties and responsibilities, I think we talked about this last time, it'd be some kind of like spreadsheet or, that would take all the school projects and, I would hear all the possible town projects. And it says, develop a template format for the town and Concord Public Schools to complete annually. So one thing is they got to figure out what goes on in this template.
So, so, excuse me for interrupting, but, um, to complete annually, you're also expect, not only develop the template, but fill in the first year of the template, right? Going forward?
No, I think this committee is.
That's what I'm trying to clarify.
Right. They're, they're going to develop the format.
Gonna handle the schools and the town.
Right. They're going to develop the format that has to be completed annually.
Okay. Then I did understand it correctly. Okay, good. Excuse me. Can I ask a que, we, we have one of those.
Right. That's exactly what I'm saying. The school has one.
So the committee is going to develop one?
No.
That's different? Or is this an addition to?
I think it's a matter of, they may make a suggestion to the template you have. I don't know what they will do. But the idea will be to take whatever you, you have and to take whatever the schools have and figure out a way to present it as a unified.
Right.
Piece to this committee. So your stuff will be an input, the school's stuff will be an input, and then this thing that you're calling a temp, uh, spreadsheet or whatever, that will just be an integration of the various plans.
Also, um, I'm not, I think the town has one for the first level and the second level.
What is, I don't.
Okay.
What is the first level?
Right. Okay. So it says here we have, um, capital planning in Concord has three layers. The minor capital items are funded within the operating town.
Capital outlay.
Yeah. Okay. That's not what this committee's going to do. Then the second level is, um, intermediate and large capital expenditures that are in the, um, article that is presented, and that's not what this committee's going to do.
Okay.
Then there's a third level that is more like what your consultant is working on, the very large.
Long-range, bigger picture.
Big ones like.
Excluded debt projects.
A whole public safety building or a whole.
So this committee is only looking for excluded?
Yes.
Excluded debt.
That's right.
Nothing in the levy limit, right?
Hmm.
Well, it, it, it's, there is already a process where we talk about capital in three distinct components.
Right.
You buy a computer that's in your operating budget. There's another level of expenditure that's part of your capital plan.
Right. But I mean, I, I would, I would urge the board to consider, uh, re-looking at whatever you're call, whatever you're calling number two, the second layer, because that's where we've been getting the most feedback slash pushback, including at town meeting, is because we have things, for example, the Jarrow property is a good example, where that wasn't portrayed on that, and that wasn't.
Mm-hmm.
That was within the levy limit and, and we were able to do that, but that essentially showed up one year and bumped everything that was in there out a year.
Right.
And, and we received a lot of question from folks about where is the oversight for these type of projects?
Correct.
And so we're facing that again now with other properties that are coming up for sale where we don't have an earmark that says, you know, we're going to earmark X amount of dollars for the acquisition of, of town properties, school properties, anything. It's very reactive. So what happens is, is that we take that number two. That's where the most activity is, just to let you.
Yeah.
The most activity is not in these long-range ones, although they're equally, if not more important, but the most activity is in that number two, where we say, this year we've decided A, B, and C are more important than the things that we said were important last year, and we either bump everything up a year, two years, or we take it right off the ten-year.
I, I agree with Kate, and I had that in, in the previous draft. And then at our last meeting, we, we ended up taking that out.
I'm not sure you can effectively manage.
Right.
The long-term borrowing if you don't manage the, the capital. The, the capital outlay, which is the small things that are done within the operating expenses, it's essentially $5,000 out of whack for buildings. And that's for things like HVAC and what, you don't need, that's the minutia.
Mm-hmm.
But the other stuff is real money. It's hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions. And I think we receive a lot of static for, for having that be as fluid a document as it has been.
What I'm, what I'm hearing is that, um, the price point isn't the trigger. It's the, um, you know, it's interesting because it's not size, it's not necessarily price point. It's almost, it feels almost more goal-oriented. If this is in anticipation or moving towards one of our goals, whether it be for town, um, facilities or school facilities.
Mr. Banfield, you have to come up though.
I'll be doing it. Dean Banfield, um, Chair of the Finance Committee, so I thought I'd just weigh in briefly on this. Um, the policy that, uh, the Finance Department for the town uses for the kinds of things that Kate is referring to does not inherently drive what we worry about the most, which is increasing tax burdens on the median household. Uh, because the policy says that we would be able to do borrowings within a five to seven percent of budget, uh, which is our, our debt service, uh, authorization. It, it's really mostly an administrative decision, as long as you're within the policy limits, it's not going to push the tax burden up dramatically. So those things, you may say, we're pushing something out, but you're also not burdening the taxpayer. Now, the taxpayer may be annoyed because they're not getting something they want, but that's because we're making decisions within that, within that range. So the, the work that this group would do is try to manage the very large things, which are inherently going to have tax impacts on, on the citizen.
But the reason, the reason it doesn't have, I mean, I get it, but the reason it doesn't have a tax impact is because the town is pushing stuff out.
That's correct. Well, the town is making choices within, uh, within a borrowing, within a borrowing window that it has decided is, is its policy.
Right.
So if it, it, it just says, this is the policy under which we will borrow within our levy limit borrowing. It then makes decisions as to what to get. And if it pushes something out, that's because we made a decision.
Right.
But it, but it's not making the kind of.
So your point, as long as the town continues to do that, that is.
As long as it stays within its policy.
Exactly. Within its, within its policy, then people can, you know, ding you for making poor choices.
One way or another, they certainly.
But it is not the.
But that's the underlying rationale for why it wasn't in there.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. And I'm not pushing one way or the other. I'm just, I'm responding to the, the amount of, of time and energy that we spent on these past couple of town meetings talking about, you know, articles or capital that, that didn't impact necessarily, necessarily the tax bill, but people felt like should have been part of a larger, more explanatory process.
And that's kind of what.
And maybe that's on us to do that.
And that, that's what I'm trying to get at, which is, in this middle space, um, our decisions, because, because we're looking at it from your description, it's within a financial discussion.
Right.
It's not within a goals-based discussion, which is where you might end up with number three, a large outlay.
Right.
So we may, our system may be encouraging us to make these smaller decisions when a step, when looking at the data, which is what fundamentally this, this task force can do, is assemble this, it might make us very aware.
Right.
Of bigger decision-making that overall solves more problems, you know, solves more of that middle ground.
Sure. Think, think of it as a homeowner who says, I'm going to spend this much money on maintenance for my home on an annual basis. So one year, I decide to repave my driveway. Well, that means I'm not painting the outside of my house, but the outside is starting to peel. Well, maybe the neighbors think I should have painted the outside of my house because it looks very bad, but I want to not have to, you know, have cracks in my driveway. And that's my choice.
But if you live with a spouse, theoretically, you would have discussed it, right?
You would have discussed it.
So I think the criticism is, is that we're one end of a, of a, you know, partnership.
Right.
And this end seems to be making decisions without consulting with the other end. That, that isn't always true, and I think we try our best to, to do that. Taking the Jarrow example again, I mean, we widely advertised that. People really wanted that. I'm not saying it was, it was things that, that the community didn't want.
Right.
But I don't, I don't know as if it was, uh, studied by a group of people committee-wise. It was the town and the group of individuals who are either supportive or not.
Right.
And this kind of is a little asymmetric also, because this kind of activity isn't as prevalent at the school level.
Right.
The school level is these giant spikes.
That's probably true.
That come.
Although they have to manage.
Occasionally.
They do have to manage the purchase of buses.
Right.
The replacement of, of, uh, air exchangers on, say, you know, Alcoa. They have, you know, big chunky things that get into their.
Yeah. But if you just looked at a timeline of 20 years or something and looked at the expenditure, I think you'd see big spikes for the schools.
So, yeah, so I, I tend to agree with the decisions I think that were made here last, at the last meeting, and that is that this committee would tend to be trying to manage what we'll call the peaks of large, uh, capital outlays that are excluded debt and that drive tax burdens. Yeah. So that's my, my comment from the Finance.
It might be a topic of another day to ask if the, if the policy parameters that the town uses for making that are, in fact, given the day, whether they should be expanded or contracted or something. So that could be another discussion.
Certainly, there are, there are always going to be those who wish choices were different and that, or that they just want more. So it's hard, hard to.
Thank you.
So, um, just to clarify, those are the positions of, those are my comments. I'm not really speaking for the committee, but I am the chair, so.
Very helpful. Thank you. All right.
Well, I, I think that Kate and Jane are making a good point that there might be some instances where this intermediate level might need to be part of the capital planning process. Um, I, I too received a number of comments from citizens about, you know, why aren't you including XYZ? That were things that were done last year that probably fit in the intermediate. Nobody's complaining about how many cruisers we bought or a Bobcat or a computer. So the first layer is definitely not at issue. But there could be a time, um, if it is, I mean, for example, something like Balls Hill Road, that was several million dollars. It's partly, it's the price point, I think. When it hits a certain level, some of the citizens, um, are saying that we should have more of a, I don't know, a different process. I don't know exactly what process they want. So I don't know. I, I originally had in here, in rare cases, it might need to include the second layer, intermediate and large expenditures.
I would, I would, I'd think it may be the case, but I would like to say, keep focused on, on this major set of activities and get it organized and get it done. And once we get that done, I think it's perfectly appropriate then to ask, well, okay, do we have what we need here, or are we still feeling some kind of pressure? I think it adds.
Okay.
Not only does it add a level of complexity, which is the way it goes, but for me, there's a real asymmetry between the schools and the town. We know the schools have got this middle school spike coming up. There's going to be nothing the schools are going to be doing over the next five years that, you know, come anywhere near that.
Right. That's the third layer. But in the second layer, they usually spend $900,000, $1 million on roof repair or whatever.
That's right. All within their.
Or the, the parking situation. There are issues that come up, so.
I would like to see it stay the way you've written it. And, you know, if, if it turns out we get it done and we still have questions or it's not enough, let's come back and revisit it.
Okay.
That's just my point of view. So where are we?
I'm in.
Okay. So you, you've got a draft that you, yours squared away with.
Yeah, I'm, right.
All right. Let's get a motion on for them. That gets to be you.
I move to adopt, uh, draft five of the Charge of the Concord Capital Planning Task Force.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right. And so, uh, similar remarks that I made with economic vitality, we've now created this charge, so we'd sure love to get, uh, green cards from folks. And for all of those, uh, organizations or departments that are required to develop a representative, I hope they would do that, and that includes us. So at our next meeting on the 26th, an agenda item will be to, uh, figure out who's going to do that for us. So thank you, Terry, very much for getting that done for us. Next item, public comments. Yes, ma'am?
Carlin Reed, 83 Wits, and question about the special municipal employees. I was looking into it after seeing it on your agenda, and I noticed that the last time the list of special municipal employees was updated was 2013. And I know for a fact that there is at least one entity, the Cable Advisory Committee on that list, that no longer exists, and that a committee I'm part of, the PEG Access Advisory Committee, is not on that list. So I'm going to recommend that the Select Board at some point update the list for the special municipal employees, and also include a training as far as the procedures when you have your October training for new committee members, because that was fascinating to see the. October training for new committee members, because that was fascinating to see the documents that Mr. Booth had to go through for the disclosure.
Thank you very much. Good suggestion. Thanks for bringing it to our, our attention. Committee liaison report, Susan.
On the 22nd, I attended Tammy Guevay's Transit Town Hall, it was a two-hour meeting and small group. Terry was there as well, right? Yeah, we were both there. And a lot of information and a lot to digest. They had like seven different options for the MBTA and with lots of different variables, so it was, it was an educational meeting. On the 23rd, I attended Planning Board, and you heard about that earlier tonight. The 24th, there was a Complete Streets meeting, and they're, they're still open to feedback on, there's a Wiki link that I don't have in front of me, but till August 1st, they're still open to feedback on Complete Streets.
Yes, on the Complete Streets, which I can-
Yeah, you can. 25th, the Middle School Building Committee has, has had another productive meeting. They've scheduled two school visits for this Wednesday for, for middle schools that are new, so people get a sense of what, what they look like. And then on the 25th, also that day, Mike and I were both at the District Attorney, Ryan, did a very informative and interesting presentation on scams that target seniors over at the Harvey Wheeler.
Great. Thank you very much. Linda?
I attended the CPC meeting. They're happy to have full membership at this point. They revised updates to the 2020 CPC plan, mostly incorporating the goals and objectives from envisioned Concord in that document, which is very important. And as all of us probably know at this point, it's looking hopeful that the governor hopefully will sign a bill that will increase the amount for CPC funding, which is critical. I attended the CHA meeting, and they were talking about the Jarrow property and continue to talk about repurposing federal housing, which is an initiative coming down from Washington. And then I also just want to comment briefly on the Complete Streets Forum, which I also attended. The, the enthusiasm and the number of comments from the bike riders is magnificent and, and very interesting. One of the things I was struck with, however, is that particularly with an aging population in Concord, that there may be some additional outreach that's needed to that population to get their impact on the Complete Streets, and I don't know how we do that, but that, that word should get out.
To the bike, biking community?
No, to the seniors, because it's-
To the, to the rest of Concord citizens who may not necessarily bike, but who are, have issues regarding street safety and, you know, yeah.
Complete Streets are not just about bicycles, but-
Right.
About everybody.
No, it was wonderful to see the enthusiastic response and the, and the, in participation from the bikers. A lot of good feedback came in, but I'm just saying that it's, we need to get to other citizens as well.
I also attended that Complete Streets workshop, and just to follow up on what Linda said, someone asked, if someone isn't very computer literate because this Wiki program, and they're right, it was a little bit difficult to, to get the click right on your street on, and, and get it to work. So they offered a couple phone numbers that people could call and actually send in their comments by telephone, and one of the phone numbers is the Public Works number, which I don't have in front of me, but if you just call the Department of Public Works, talk to Anna, she will write down your comments and enter them for you. So that'll help with some people that are not real computer literate. I also attended the Transportation Workshop with Tammy, very good. And on the 20th, I attended the Women Elected Municipal Officials Leadership Conference, long mouthful, at Wellesley College, and I met Select Board members from Carlisle, Wayland, Sudbury, Bedford, and Littleton. And I'm hoping this type of networking is going to be useful, because we have a lot of projects where we're working with our neighboring towns. And one of the big topics that came up was, how do you recruit volunteers for committees? We're in a really busy society where a lot of the most productive people are busy working and having kids, and how do you get them interested and, and able to come to meetings? And that's one of our biggest roles as Select Board members, is to actively be recruiting people, and also just even explaining what local government does, what committees do, what the time commitment is. Most people out there really don't know a lot of that stuff, so we have to kind of always be educating them, I guess. So it was a good, it was a good conference. President of Wellesley College was a keynote speaker, Dr. Paula Johnson, and I recommend it in the future.
Well, I, I attended the Climate Action Advisory Board meeting and was really, Gary Kleiman gave a presentation focused on the Conference of Long Range Plan, specifically on the, the way it evaluates in section, I believe it's nine, I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to quickly pull up from memory, but the, and it's, it's worthy of this whole conversation because it is a, an evaluative tool, and in terms of coming up with the climate action plan, which is what their charge is, they're trying to, to look at what we already have and how you might place it, place those goals within that framework. And if you'll pause, help me pause for a second.
Are you thinking of the Section Five checklist?
Yes, thank you. Section Five checklist, which is a really good beginning document for any of our conversations. And I was, as always, I wish that there was an opportunity for every committee in town to visit, not just as liaison, but to, to visit each other, because we're, none of a, none of the committees, just like none of the town departments or the school departments are siloed. And yet, the lack of information flow is, it's, it's just unfortunate, because we have so many active, to your point earlier, about the, how do you recruit volunteers? How do you also make the absolute best use of the volunteers that you have? I feel like sometimes I'm, I'm imagining that we're the lucky ones to sit here, because we tend to hear and see a lot more. So that was that. I, then I attended the HGC, which sadly had not been properly noticed, so I had a wonderful time catching up with Heather Gill and the Chair, but there was not a meeting. And then I also attended the Complete Streets meeting, and both Linda and Terry's comments are true. We need to figure out a way to make the information gathering period that we're, this is the last week of, truly accessible and understood by everybody in Concord, because this is our tool, we're putting it, we have a consulting team on, on deck. It's only gonna reflect what comes in, in that respect. And yes, the biking population is active on this. There are certain hiking groups, there, you know, there are certain interest groups that are already accessing it, but I, I think you're right. I don't think it's fully capturing all of the input that we should.
Right, and the, and the deadline is August 1st, which is Friday, I think. Thursday.
Is there anything for us to do as a board?
I think we can continue to talk, you know, obviously-
How about news and notices? Can we put a reminder?
It's been in.
It's been in, I understand, but I'm just saying it's a-
Is it possible you could reach, what's today, Monday, reach out to COA? I don't know if they, on Wednesday, they ever gonna meet this week?
Yes, we can. But we, we've distributed something to them as well with the phone numbers that they can call, so we-
Right, and again, you can't, you know, you can, you can't make a horse drink, right? So I think it's just the opportunity is right now, and this is a dead time of year for a lot of people.
Yeah, that's, that's the challenge.
And I'm just glad we have reflective response.
Susan indicated I attended that workshop by the District Attorney. It was pretty, I think, there were 40, 45 people there maybe, plus the chief, Chief Economist there. This was very interesting and very informative. I also attended the Finance Committee meeting on Thursday. They had a very full agenda. As Kate indicated earlier, they approved their guidelines letters and they went out. They had a, a good discussion on fiscal sustainability, and talking about using the, a statistic as a, as a way of gauging sustainability. And then they had a rather full discussion around a topic which I'm sure will come back up again, which was the middle school stabilization fund. It was the idea, we, it's pretty likely we're gonna be looking at a middle school, I don't know, but we'll find out, and we've used stabilization funds in the past. This is a little bit of a twist to it, as I understood what was being said, because it was not just a traditional stabilization fund, which you might remember is essentially allocating free cash to this fund and pulling it out when the tax spikes. But this was recognition that there may be some additional surplus property associated with going forward with an integrated middle school, and that the disposal of that property might create the stabilization fund, if you will, to be used to sort of offset taxes in the future. So I, I think it will, at some point, at some point, I think the Finance Committee should probably punt this off and get the Select Board working with them to put together something if we're gonna try to go to town, town meeting, or whether it's premature this year, I don't know yet, but I think we should work, work together with them. So next, I have no miscellaneous correspondence or no committee nominations, so next are committee appointments.
Move to appoint Diana Kleimer of 13 River Street and Robert Monroe of 1400 Lowell Road to the Concord Center Cultural District Committee, John Harris, Budget and Purchasing Administrator to the Concord Middle School Building Committee, Eve Eisenberg of 833 Old Road to Nine Acre Corner to the Zoning Board of Appeals as Associate Member, and Todd Benjamin of 333 Sudbury Road to the Affordable Housing Trust Study Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have appointment of election officers. I would entertain a motion.
Move to appoint the 52 members as election officers for terms to expire July 31, 2020, as listed with names and addresses in the town clerk's memo to the Select Board, dated July 29, 2019.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming, and good night, everybody.